Oh, I see someone walking.
Oh, you see, hang on one second.
I don't have. She is my friend today.
Okay, I wouldn't have taken her that long.
No. Nobody coming? Okay. Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of May 22, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Sorry. Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson? Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
You please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, on this beautiful spring night. First, we will go to public comment, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. First, we have an update on the progress toward dementia-friendly and age-friendly designation for the city of Rochester. Chief?
I'm the IT consultant on this.
Many hats.
We have our own IT guy.
This way, we can keep you on for another few years, chief?
Sure. I'm listening to every word.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Berry. I'm a nurse at Corwell Health Beaumont Troy Hospital. Sorry, I'm still having trouble with the name change. I think I presented to this group, actually, exactly a year ago, maybe not the exact date, but the month, about getting these initiatives started. And since then, I've been working with Chris Coe and Renee Courtwright, and we have really made some progress. So just a few reminders about why these initiatives are important. We know that the US population is rapidly aging. We know that Michigan and Oakland County have a high percentage of population over the age of 55, as well as over the age of 65, and an extending life expectancy. And in relation to dementia, we know there's an estimated 190,000 Michiganders age 65 and older that have Alzheimer's dementia. Lots of family members who are caring for these people who are living with dementia, so a lot of lay caregivers who are involved in that. And then in Rochester, approximately 15% of elderly people reported having difficulty remembering. And the reason that's important is there's a large population of people who are undiagnosed for multiple reasons, so may not even know that they're living with that health issue. Michigan is supportive of these initiatives. These are from the 2019 and 2020 reports, but part of, two of the goals in those reports are related to becoming age-friendly. So Governor Whitmer actually applied for Michigan to be an age-friendly state. And then state plan goal number two is related to maintaining health and independence, and specifically for caregivers who are caring for those in the home and assisting them in whichever way possible. So what we've done so far, we started these discussions in May of 2022. Since then, we've created a committee, and we started meeting monthly since about October of 2022. We have several representatives from the city and the committee. We have the fire department, we have the police department, we have Ascension Health, we have Corwell Health, we have the OPC, the DDA, we have the public library, Cedar Brook, Sunrise, American House, and Comfort Keepers all attend our meetings. So we have a very robust group. We did obtain dementia-friendly recognition in March, so, and that's a huge thanks to Chris because she handled that application process. We started tracking our initiatives, and so we have a spreadsheet right now. There are so many things going on in the city really related to both of these initiatives, but I just listed a couple there. They started offering a memory cafe. OPC is doing one, as well as the library. The fire department is going to start with a project with locator bracelets, and we can talk more about that if you have questions. We can, Chris can give you an explanation as well. And then the OPC, as you probably know, has several initiatives. They have the adult day service, caregiver groups, and much, much more. I had the pleasure of touring the OPC with Renee, and I kind of felt like, oh, I can't wait to be over 65. This is really nice.
Fifty, fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
I'm just used to saying sixty-five.
It's so soon.
Soon, well, then I'm much closer than I thought. And we created a website, which is FriendlyRochester.org. So we wanted to get a name that would cover both initiatives. We decided as a group that FriendlyRochester.org would work. We can show you that website as well because it is live. And then we have now started the process towards age-friendly recognition. Renee is really handling that. She's done an amazing job. And just a reminder, once we get age-friendly, we'd be the first city in Michigan to have both. So no city in Michigan has both. We have two dementia-friendly, and I believe five age-friendly, but nobody has both. And so what we are doing next, or what, and what we're asking for, is we do need some support to move forward. So for the age-friendly initiatives, they do like to see at least two or more representatives from the city and city council on the steering committee. We need help promoting and supporting both initiatives to the city. And then we have our dementia-friendly logo, which we can utilize right now, and we would like to add that to the city website. One of the, or two of the things we're actually working on is we'll be holding a live presentation with a virtual option for all the businesses. It will be free. It's about an hour of education, and it will be related to making their businesses age for dementia-friendly. So restaurants, retail stores, banks, whichever, coffee shops. And once they complete the education and make the changes, if they need to do so, they will receive a decal that they can put on their window that says they're dementia-friendly business. We also are working on obtaining our nonprofit status so that we can allow fundraising and donations to keep the initiatives going. This is what the website looks like, and I wonder if I can just take you to it really quick. Maybe a little bit easier. Already forgot what I was doing.
Did he get the police chief back up there?
Yeah. So this is what it looks like. We will have resources about both initiatives, option to donate, but a mission, a vision, how you can get involved, and who you can contact. Like I said, resources. Hopefully, we'll have some testimonials soon. But it is a live website, and the ability to add logos or sponsorships as well. So we're very excited about that. Mike Palmer from the fire department made that for us, so. And you, Renee, do you want to talk about age-friendly?
Sure.
Okay.
Renee, how are you tonight?
I am well. Mayor Bixson, council members. So an age-friendly community is a livable community for all ages. And one of the things that's so amazing about coming together with it, both the dementia-friendly and the age-friendly, is when you take those steps to integrate the work of both movements, they can reduce the duplicated efforts, avoid confusion, save resources, and allow each movement to strengthen and support each other. And that's truly what I believe that this will do. So, you know, there's this demographic shift that we just talked about, presents an opportunity for communities that are prepared, well-designed, age-friendly communities, foster economic growth, and make for a happier, healthier residents of all ages. So what we're going to be going into next is we do have an individual, a community member, that's willing to lead the charge, in a sense, in working on a lot of this initiative with, working with Chris and Sarah and I. But first, we're going to be joining a network where there are enrollment, and then we're going to be kind of conducting a community needs assessment. There'll be a survey, and there'll be a lot of meetings. But initially, there's going to be a steering committee, like we had mentioned. So if you would like to be part of that steering committee, which will have individuals that are already on the committee, but it also will have individuals from the community, and that's what we need from the city, is some support in that regard, and maybe identifying individuals that would be good on contributors on the committee. So there's, that's where that will go. And then from there, we will be developing an action plan, implement the action plan, and track the progress. So this is really, it's like a seven-year, or five-year commitment. And then from there, you just start over again. But it's very exciting. It's, you know, we're, in a sense, we truly are an age-friendly community in so many different ways. We're just really putting a lot of emphasis in these different domains of transportation, excuse me, if I don't have my glasses on here, outdoor spaces, housing, transportation, participation, communication, information, social participation, respect, social inclusion, health services, and community supports. And we have so much, all of that in place. It's just taking that in and getting the input from the community members. So we're really excited about the next steps, and you will be kept apprised of where we're at in the process. And of course, we'll have some participation from the council and the community. So we're excited. And as we move forward, we'll keep you in the loop.
Very good. Thank you. So what is, what's the next step that you need from us, I guess, is our question? You need to come?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of one for a second. Mayor Bixson, good evening, council. The next step, I think, like Renee and Sarah and I talked about tonight, was just people. I meet Wednesday with Jo Allen, and thank you for that contact. I'll meet with her about the 501(c)(3) status. As we go into, I'm going to meet with Miles from Memories this week also, a company out in the Calhoun area, Battle Creek area. They, very instrumental in bringing the locator bracelets to their community, and they have a whole program that they're going to work with us. Funding, personnel, people, I know Anne, she's been coming to the meetings that we've been having at the fire station. That's been a great help. So right now, I think Sarah, funding, you know, eventually, we're going to do our 501(c)(3) status, but really, I think people. So if any of you are interested, or if you have any other personnel.
Very good. Thank you.
That's what we're looking for right now.
As Chris mentioned, funding, this is, if you remember, several years ago, council allowed us to put money into a public engagement line item for our budget. So we'll be utilizing part of that funds to purchase a bracelet that will, people will be able to apply for. And I know, Chris, if you can tell them what's going to be on the bracelet.
These locator bracelets are nice, and they make different kinds. I wish I would have brought one with me to show. They're basically just an identification bracelet. They have a QR code on the back that can be scanned. A simple bracelet, I believe, is $45, I think, with the program. But basically, it'll have the QR code on it. It'll have all of the patient or the person's information on it. It'll have their contact information. And I believe it'll also have the ability to show the coordinates where the person's at. So there's also a GPS option, a bracelet, or a watch, a GPS watch that's available. It's a little bit more expensive. It incurs a monthly fee. So we'll develop the program, develop the form to fill out, and we'll bring it forward. And we'll have all that information. That's what I'm working on right now. I hope to get out to the Battle Creek area and meet with Miles from Memories and put the program together. I hope to get more information on the bracelets, the cost, and the breakdown and everything. And we'll put the program together and probably come back and share that with you.
Thanks.
Just as I remember, council, it was several years ago when the police and fire started responding to, I'll call them, people with dementia who walked away from either home or whatever and then became lost. And really, Sarah helped us out so much with the training and this, started that whole ball rolling, if you recall, when we did the presentation to you about a year ago. It was an issue that we identified locally here. So I think you're seeing everything kind of culminate into where we're at right now. And getting your support's going to be key.
So, chief, I will talk with council people, and we will get you to, to council members to be on there. And chief, you're the liaison person?
Well, actually, kind of, Chris has been heading it up for me. It's nice to be able to delegate, but, you know, she's, she's kind of, she and really, this trio here have done all the hard work, and I'm just trying to stay out of their way. So.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any? Council member Trent?
I'd just like to say again, I think it's a great program, having people in my family who have experienced need, and from the police or the fire. People don't understand that a lot of people, elderly people in these homes are falling or not thinking straight, and, you know, between being treated like they're crazy, or if they, if people understand what the problem is, it's so much nicer for everyone. And I always appreciate all the help that we've, my, my family has been given. And I know you help so many others.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, is there any other public comment tonight that's not on the agenda? Brian, doesn't look like anybody.
Yep, there is no one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here, Brian. Okay, now we'll go on to approval of the minutes. Is it consideration of the minutes the regular made of May 8, 2023?
So moved.
Motion by council member Peterson.
Support.
Support by council member Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is approval of the consent agenda, is consideration of a special event application from Bethesda Romanian Pentecostal Church to hold the heart, cry, uplifting music event on July 9 in the band show. And next is review of the current special event calendar.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by council member Peterson.
Support.
Support by council member Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, a public hearing to consider the drinking water system improvement, 2024 Drinking Water State Revolving Fund project plan. Mr. DPW, Director Alec, welcome tonight.
Mayor, council, hello. So back in February, city council authorized or approved DLZ Engineering to put together our project plan proposal for DWSRF loan program. So tonight, as a part of that process, public hearing is required on the proposal, as well as a resolution that has to be approved by council in order for them to submit our application on our behalf. So tonight, we have Michael Lor from DLZ Engineering to give a little presentation on the proposal, and then we'll have a public hearing after that, and then open up to any comments or questions from city council to ultimately pass a resolution. So if there are any questions up front, if not, we'll bring up Michael Lor, and they can introduce themselves and walk through their presentation.
Come on up. Come on up and welcome.
Good evening. In November of last year, on behalf of the city of Rochester, we submitted an application for some water system infrastructure improvements. And since that time, we've been working diligently with Alec and his team to develop a project plan, which we're presenting to you today. The project plan was published on the city website for public comment, which is a requirement of this program. At this point in time, we have not received any public comment, but we keep that available. And then with your approval, we will submit that project plan, which is due June 1 for Eagle, for Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, for submission, for potential funding. So what is the DWSRF program? It's a low-interest loan financing program that assists communities with construction of needed drinking water system improvements. In 1996, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund was established by amendments to the Safe Water Drinking Water Act. Each year, Congress authorizes an amount to be appropriated and is allocated among the states. For the fiscal year 2024, approximately $100 million is available for projects such as improving drinking water treatment, fixing leaking or old water mains, improving sources of water supply, replacing or constructing finished water storage tanks, and other infrastructure improvements to protect public health. There is additional monies available through the bipartisan loan and American Rescue Plan programs, but as we have seen in the past, those are typically reserved for emerging contaminants such as PFOS, and for lead and copper programs, and things of that nature. So we are here today to present the proposed projects. Again, as Alec had mentioned, this is a requirement to hold this public meeting this evening, to get your input, to receive general input, questions, comments, concerns regarding the project. So we're going to go over the description of water infrastructure, identify any alternatives through this, provide any recommended alternatives with associated costs, discussion of project financing, and we're going to go through some potential social and environmental impacts related to the project. So again, working with this, with the city over the number of years, we have identified some capital improvement projects. First one, as part of this, is the, on the east side system, or the GLEWA system, as we often refer to it as, water booster station installation. There's a high level of change in elevation on the east side, so we often see some changes in water pressure. If you guys live on the east side, you know what I'm talking about. So that's been a constant concern over the years. So installing a water booster station will definitely help with the pressures and water reliability. Also, we're planning to install two sections of water main, which I'll show you some maps here in a few moments. So some dead-end sections, so if there was, if there is a water break or a fire, adding those sections of water main will definitely help increase with pressures and help with, you know, firefighting activities. On the west side of the system, we are proposing some water main upgrades, particularly along Main Street. So that, there's sections of water main where they are currently undersized, and those sections of water main are really old, so they definitely have exceeded their useful life. So that, those sections will definitely provide some additional reliability in with the system and added flow. So this is an overview of the project. So this is the water main section here, right along Rochester Road. So both sides of the road will be impacted. The booster station, which will be located at Parkdale and Dequindre Roads, and then we've got two sections of the water main moving, as we mentioned. So at Boulder Court, and then along Letica Drive. So again, this is the approximate location of where we're proposing for the east side water booster station. So you can see a little bit better here along Boulder Court. So this is this dead-end section of water main that I was referring to. So the installation here in red is what we're proposing, so that'll definitely help with pressures and with flow during emergency situations. Again, Letica Drive, so this is the dead-end section here, so we're proposing along the red to install some water main to assist with, with flow and pressures. And again, the Main Street section here, so the, the current water main is four to six inches, and we're, we're going to be upgrading that to 12 inches. And more or less, both sides of the road will be impacted. So again, with this project plan, we are required to identify potential alternatives to the, to the optimum performance of existing facilities to, to the upgrade. So the first option would be no action, just continue maintaining the infrastructure as is. Some regional alternatives that we looked at, you know, as you know, the east side system, or, excuse me, the west side system. The east side system is, you are purchasing water from Shelby Township. We looked at options for the city to be a wholesale customer. That's really, it would be, wouldn't really be cost-effective for you to do that, because you are getting, you are getting, you know, some cost savings by working with the township on, on that. And it's really not going to be necessarily improving the system through the booster station or the water main improvements. Also, again, with the east side water treatment plant, you know, it just isn't cost-effective to, to add all that additional infrastructure. And then for a single-source system, we have looked at that over the years, but the west side, that water plant, there really isn't enough capacity to provide water for the entire system and city as a whole. So again, it's really not cost-effective for us to, for us to do any of those three options. So again, for alternative to providing upgrades and additional water main to supply high-quality water to existing customers, to provide adequate flows and pressures, particularly during, you know, high-peak season during the summer months for the east side system. And if you do have any water main breaks, any fires that need to be put out, we definitely help improve that system, and providing reliability and adequate pressure. Also, along Main Street, as I mentioned, there's, you know, definitely some issues, not current issues, but we could see some potential issues along that street, along the street of water main breaks if we don't take care of the system now, because it is old, it's undersized by current practices. So this is a breakdown of those recommendations with the, with the number two, optimum performance. So approximately $6.6 million for the project. Again, we looked at these other alternatives. So for the city to become a wholesale customer would be approximately $19 million, and then for a single-source system is approximately $9 million. This is a breakdown of the budget, the project as a whole. So this includes design, construction, construct, construction administration. And we did have some preliminary archaeological studies performed, which is, again, requirement of the project plan. We, also, legal services and bond counsel will be required for their down the line once the project is awarded. So I do want to stress again that this is a low-interest loan program. So the current, the current and upcoming fiscal year interest rate is 1.875, which the, the current bond market for typical bond interest rate is 4.3. So that, doing the calculations, your annual principal and interest payment is approximately $400,000. And an annual SRF loan to bond market savings is approximately $100,000. So principal and interest will be funded through the city's O&amp;M budget, unrestricted water fund balance, and rate adjustments. This is a breakdown of your overall savings over the course of the 20-year loan. So for $6.6 million project, you're going to be saving over $2 million over the 20-year period if you go with the low-interest loan SRF program versus a conventional bond. Again, as part of the project plan development process, we have to identify any potential social and environmental impacts with the project. It's typical with most construction projects, you can anticipate some slight traffic impacts, noise, noise issues, and, you know, things of that nature. But we try to keep the, the impacts on the traffic side as minimal as possible. Obviously, along Main Street, that's going to be most impacted. Also, we look at possible environmental impacts. Because the project is within close proximity to the Paint and, Paint Creek and Clinton River Trail, we did have to add this in the project plan. So we reached out to SHPO, the Michigan National Features Inventory, the DNR. And so this information received back that there could be adverse impacts to the Slipper Shell, Rainbow, Food and Shell, Creek Hills, Splitter, I'm trying to say that five times fast, Raid Bean, and Snuffbox Mussels, and the Northern Long-Eared Bat. So with any project, you know, we always look at potential impacts to wetlands, to floodplain, and to its inhabitants. So if, you know, with, with the long-eared bat, we can certainly add in things, written language into the specifications that, you know, there that, you know, there won't be any major construction going on during their peak dusting season and things like that nature. So there's ways to get around that. But just note that it's, you know, it's very unlikely that we're going to have any negative impact, but we do have to identify that because it is, because of the location of the M dot, the Main Street This is a breakdown of our current schedule. So as I mentioned, we have to submit the project plan by June 1st of this year. It does take some time for Eagle to go through their scoring process. As you can imagine, you know, everyone across the state is submitting applications for the DWSRF, the CWSRF programs. So it will take some time, usually here about September, October-ish, of whether we'll be awarded or not. And if we do get awarded, then by February 2024, we will submitting preliminary plans and specifications to Eagle for their approval. And then by April, we'll go through the permitting process and final submittal of plans and specifications. By May of 2024, we will be finalizing bid documents for contractor selection with anticipated construction time for Phase One of August 2024. Now, I should know, I guess I failed to mention this earlier, but for the M dot portion, the Main Street, because it is M dot project, we're calling this Phase Two. So that's not slated to start until 2026. So that's really out of our control at this point. M dot's continuing to have conversations with Alex's team and AEW and ourselves on that. So, but that's the current schedule as it stands. So for Phase One, complete construction, final restoration will be in 2025. And then for Phase Two, the M dot portion, construction, final restoration is anticipated in October of 2027. So with that, we'd open up to questions.
So before we open the public hearing, are there questions for Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor Vixen. Thank you, Laura and Mike, for your presentation. And I'm glad you added that caveat at the end that we're going to do this along with M dot because, you know, that's what we're trying to do in the city. We don't tear up a street without doing everything underneath. So I think that's a critical part of it. Earlier in the presentation in your email, you said approximately $100 million is available for fiscal year 24 projects. Is that in the state of Michigan, 100 million?
Yeah, correct. That's the state of Michigan. The additional monies that might be available through BIL or American Rescue Fund, those monies are unknown at this point. So we don't want to include them right now.
So we're going to apply for the full amount of that, you know, even though this project's not going to-
Absolutely. Yeah, there's no other way to really do it. You include all your project costs and it goes into the queue. We'll be competing against any other project that's submitted for the program. They score you based on points. One of the benefits of combining the two phase projects like we did, you can score points in different categories. So trying to kind of get the biggest project we can to put forward to help that score.
And we had discussions with Eagle early on in the process shortly after we submitted that application in 2022. So they're well aware that this is going to be a multi-phase project.
How optimistic are you with only $100 million and us looking to get, you know, less than 10% of that? And there's a lot of other communities having similar discussions. What's our chances?
Yeah, it's going to be highly competitive. There's no question about that. I think right now, the interest rate difference between open market and SRF project makes it worth the effort. Just for your application, these project plans that we're putting together and submitting to the state, they are being used for other avenues of funding. We're seeing like congressionally directed spending going through this process as well. So it can help you down the road, even if you don't get qualified for the SRF program. So just wanted to kind of let you know that. One other point of clarification that I wanted to make sure is very clear to everybody. By approving the project plan tonight, you're not agreeing to move forward with any part of the project. Okay? I just want to make that clear. We would have to get through the point of Eagle, you know, deciding whether you're going to qualify for the project or not. And at that point, you'd have all the ability in the world to say whether you want to move forward with even the design at that point. So if you approve the resolution tonight to move the project plan forward and adopt that, you're not agreeing with any financing of any kind. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Just one last point, and I know some of us on the Infrastructure Committee, we've used those SRF dollars very wisely over the last several years. Does our prior history help us in our application?
Not really.
Darn.
I could say yes, but not really.
But I also don't think it hurts. I don't think in a participant in a previous year, they don't say they're going to hold it out for somebody else. They look at it based on need and based on the scoring of your projects.
Thank you both.
And if unfortunately, we don't get funded this round, we can certainly be in the queue for fiscal year 2025.
Very good point. Submitting the project plan this year. Also, if you don't get selected, we can keep you in for next year and do that same project.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, thank you, Mike and Laura, for the presentation. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. So kind of the same thing on our likelihood of getting funded has to do with the critters that are going to be affected by this. There was a link to another report that we received in our packet. And as a side, it says that that long eared bat won't be affected in that, but your slide said otherwise. There are a couple of these muscles that are threatened species. Is that going to decrease the likelihood the state's going to fund something that would impact a threatened species?
No, no, it's not going to impact the likelihood that you're going to get awarded the project. What it would do is impact the measures that we have to put in place to protect that species. Or, you know, it might impact like the timing of the project if we can't go for a certain season like Laura was talking with the long eared bats. There's a time period where you wouldn't want to clear trees if that's something that you're worried about. Those type of things that we would have to put into the specifications and contract documents.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Savya?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And yes, these are all projects that both council and infrastructure have been, you know, looking at and really trying to figure out ways we can fund them. And of course, you know, my favorite way of funding things is grant money. But 2% rate difference is also attractive. So it's a good option to pursue. My question is, can we use the funds in part? And what is the timeline when we, do we have to use the funds by a certain date? How does that work with DWSRF?
So I'll say yes to in part. We've had projects that have, you know, part of the project has kind of, for one reason or another, went away. They couldn't afford it and they moved forward with partial projects. The timeframe on it is, I don't want to say open, but I know I've had projects under construction for upwards of four years and with simple extension requests based on circumstances, we can push them even further. So there's flexibility in the program.
Okay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I guess for administration, have we discussed plans or thoughts of how we're going to maintain this for like three years, three and a half years out for traffic and routing and the impact it will have?
Clarify a little bit. So-
Well, considering they're on, Phase One starts and then Phase Two is going to start almost two years later, but one's going to be completed within that period and then ending the following year after. How are we going to, that's a big stretch that's going to be worked on.
Oh, I understand. So, well, Main Street's M dot. So we've been meeting with them every two months, I think we meet. Alec goes to the meetings, Jason's gone with the meetings and we've all taken turns, I think, there. So they've got a plan when we get there. But it's a, once they start, it's kind of like downtown Main Street we did. So it'll be a compressed schedule. So nothing in between that. The East Side, minimal impact. The booster station's off the right of way. And then the two loops are off of the main road. So we should be okay. So, but we are very closely working with M dot on that project plan if we get there. They keep pushing it back. It was 24, now it's 26. So we've got plenty of time to plan that.
No, and then the public will know that we'll have rerouted.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, just so we don't have the same-
And that's part of the reason you're going to see tonight about Romeo and that Romeo and up to Parkdale because some of these alternative routes are getting pretty beat up because of Dequindre. So everybody's trying to get their peripheral work done now so that when Main Street comes, the side streets are ready to go for the backups. So we're trying to get ahead of that. So-
Awesome. Thank you.
Good question.
Mr. City Manager, do we need a public hearing?
We do. I believe you guys want to actually open a public hearing for comment and then the resolution would need a separate motion.
Okay, so at 7:40, we will open the public hearing? Come on up. Identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Taylor. I'm at 1295 Creek Point Drive. One of the properties directly affected by the Letica Pipeline. And so I didn't, I read through the plan online, but I didn't see where I could submit questions. So what I'm interested in knowing is understanding the process of, I understand it's going to be boring, the pipeline, you know, I don't know if it's from Letica to Creek Point or which. And then when they make the connection in the streets, then will they be tearing up our driveways, mine and the neighbors' driveway is about five feet apart at the street, very close. How long will it be torn up? How long will we be without water while the connection is being made? So those are some of the concerns that I've got, you know, that come to mind right away. So if you have any, can give me a feel for what that's going to be like because last summer's water fiasco with Glee Wha is still fresh in our minds.
Yep, absolutely.
We'd love to like that.
Good. So yeah, that's the main stuff. It's like, how directly will our properties be affected? And, you know, losing the bit of street that we have, we're in a little loop turnaround. So it's really just us that are affected by that, not so much the neighbors. And then, you know, the repaving process and everything else that happens at that point. And my property does have a fire hydrant. I don't know how much that impacts this as well, but still, a lot of questions that I've got.
So Alec, do you want to, or whoever, or Nick?
Will the public hearing be over and then address all these questions?
Sounds good. So we'll get more public comment and then we'll answer those questions. Any further public comments? Okay, at 7:42, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, Alec, would you like to?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So to specifically address, sir, you were in Creek Point?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we've been out there, met Alec out there. We've looked at the area very carefully. So I think we know what we're getting into. And I should point out, the route that we demonstrated was probably our preferred route, but certainly we would have to work through easement acquisitions and make sure that we've got all that straight away for any activity that took place.
As far as like construction duration, that's a very small water extension relative to infrastructure projects. I would anticipate a week of work to get that in, maybe a few days to get tested. So probably about two weeks time period where you'd see some activity. We would try to directional drill that so we wouldn't open cut the property from end to end. Certainly where you make the tie-ins and connections, you're going to have to have an excavation to make those connections. At those points, we would do what we call a live tap, where we would put a saddle on the existing main, make a connection to the live main, try and go avoid any shutdowns. So when we do that, we won't intend, the intention is not to shut down any water main or any service. And then as far as the disruption to your driveways, well, like I stated, when you do make a tie-in to the existing main, when you make entry into the ground for the directional drill process, yes, we are going to get into the ground and there will be some excavations. The intent would be to restore back to equal conditions. And that's probably going to have to, you know, have some sidewalk repair in it and some driveway repair in it. And we would certainly work with you to make sure that if we tear up your driveway, we're not going to cut, you know, four feet off of the end of the driveway and leave it. We would try to repair the entire apron to the extent necessary to make sure that that's a good repair and reasonable to the residents' expectations. So hopefully that answers a lot of the questions.
Well, so a couple of weeks, if that's for the boring and the tie-in.
You need to come up if you have, and again, maybe you can do some of this offline as well.
Yeah, that would be a project with more, that may be-
Be a lot more.
Yeah.
Good. That's what I'm interested in is, yeah, let's get a good understanding of this.
Right. There's a lot, there's a long way to go and a lot of communication.
Yeah, yeah. Because if our streets, driveways are going to be down for a month, you know, with repairs and everything else, or the water system and will the flow of water change from what we have? Do we have to worry about that water supply?
That's a good, that's a good point of clarification. So what happens when you make that loop is the hydraulics of that system are going to change. So right now, the houses on the very end like yours are pulling off of what we call a dead end water main. There's no other way for the water to go but up Creek Point Drive. Once that connection is made, water has the ability to flow from both directions, which should give you a cleaner water, better water quality because you're not on the end of a stagnant line with only a few houses pulling off of the end of that pipe. As your neighbors to the south, you know, use water, it'll start pulling off of Letica and vice versa.
We should see our guys out there. Let us have any questions if you want.
Yeah. And I think we always, if the city does any damage to property, we always, that's our policy, is to restore it. So I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, there's nothing preventing it from flowing either direction. And that's the point of it really because we want, if you have a fire on that hydrant at the end of the road, we want to be able to pull water from Letica. That's, right now, that is what's preventing us from getting good, good fire pressures up there, given the right condition.
Thank you. And we'll, again, we'll, city staff will keep in touch. Counsel?
Have we closed? Oh, we've closed.
Yeah, the public hearing was closed. Now it's up to counsel.
We're looking for support of the resolution, right?
Yep. So obviously, there's going to be a lot more discussion on the details of this plan. But I think in terms of pursuing this low, low interest rate source through Eagle makes sense. So I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented in the package to proceed forward with this Eagle drinking water state revolving fund loan.
Support?
Motion by Mayor Protem Savya, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Vixen?
Yes.
Savya?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. Thank you. Next on to legislative deliberation. First is a request to schedule a public hearing for June 26, 2023 for the Riverfront Place proposed Brownfield redevelopment project at 211 First Street. Mr. City Manager, would you like to-
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, in your packet, there's a memo from our city treasurer, Anthony Majerl, last Monday night. Marcy and I and Anthony met with the Brownfield Committee, first meeting we've had in three years since the rewall project. We are happy to report to them, because we haven't seen them in so long, about how successful the Brownfield plan was at the rewall project. It was supposed to be a seven-year plan because of the value of the property and the efficiency and the cleanup. We were able to close that plan out in three and a half years and the tax dollars go back to the taxing jurisdictions, which for this year alone is $122,600 to the DDA because that project's on the DDA. Didn't expect that for three and a half more years. So very proud of that. So it appears that we understand the process and how to work with this. Now, a couple of years ago, when the Riverfront project was in front of Planning Commission and ultimately City Council for a special project, that was a three-year journey. And you all took a lot of heat. We all did. The residents were well informed, well organized. And when it was all said and done, we did approve a plan for 134 units in a four-story, five-story building, part of its below ground, on First and Walnut, across from First Street Lofts. Then on the trail, there were 17 more three-unit condominiums below. So at that time, Mr. Randazzo had come in, talked about, hey, the cleanup appears to be between $380,000 and $450,000. I'm going to eat that in my project plan. Remember when this was in 19, pre-pandemic. So he started his journey with the engineers, which was to get to Eagle. So you had to do something called a clomar and a lomar, which is- called a clomar and a lomar, which is, when you're changing a cut and fill in a floodplain, in a 500-year floodplain, you have to spend a whole lot of money upfront to get to them to get approval. It took him two years, but he got it. And we're, that showed a lot of stalwartness, if you will, on his part to go through that. And he got those last year. Bid the project, just like the other projects in town, came in at $408 hours a square foot. That's insane. That's double, more than double what it should be. So he regrouped and thought, I'm not going to come in and downsize the property, I'm just going to wait this out, which he did. And then he came back and they did, spent a little bit more money to do the, the deep dive for the environmental problems. Environmental problem is $1.97 million in cleanup. It's basically bad dirt, but it's way deeper than they thought. So he called myself, we sat down and talked for a while. I've talked to most of the council folks. And he said, I can walk away from the project, but I've gone this far, you guys have gone this far. I would like to approach the city for a Brownfield reimbursement group grant, Brownfield reimbursement plan, that if approved again, maximum seven years, we think it would probably be more like 5.7 years, and start that process. So first step, let's go with the Brownfield Committee. They heard the presentation. He'll do the exact same presentation. He's got a great staff, great environmental team. We have a great environmental team. Both consultants were in the room, went through it all. It's been pre-run by Eagle and Michelle Bakoun, and they are in support of this project. So we would ask that, the next step would be to bring that presentation to City Council on June 26th, for us to look at. We can say no, we can say yes. Again, I want, it's important to know that when we first met with them, a typical Brownfield is, you ask for everything that's environmentally eligible through the state law. So, which is fine, but that was probably about 2.7 million. So what we did was, we sat them down, it started to get into detail, but I think this is important, and said, okay, if in fact, you did this and it was a greenfield, you had to take all that same dirt out, same exact amount of dirt, four stories deep, and take it to a Class 1 landfill, Class A landfill. It would cost you X. Now that you know the volume, and that it's dirty, it goes to a Class B landfill, what's that delta of per cubic yard? Is it $9 a cubic yard? What is it? That's all we're going to pay for. You are going to have to take out the dirt anyway, so we don't want to pay for that. And they, at first, that's not what they asked for, like, they shouldn't. Everybody asks for the full enchilada. And then we came to agree with them before we went to the Brownfield Committee, they agreed to that. So we're going delta only between Brownfield and Greenfield. That's what you'll see during the presentation, the 26th. So I would ask if we would set that public hearing for June 26th. He'll bring his whole team in. We'll do it at a regular meeting. It's probably a 20-minute presentation, but it'd be well worth it. And if we can work this out together, we'll have our tax base built and follow through on the project that we all put our time and sweat into to get approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to move it towards public hearing for June 26th.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion? Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I just have a question. What would stall the project? Like, if the Brown, it gets go to, it goes to the Brownfield Committee and then they, I mean, is it guaranteed that they can get this money? Or how?
They'd have to apply to the state.
Right. So they go through us first. If we approve it, then the state's already taking a look at it. And then you go to the taxing jurisdictions, which they've already been notified, to say we're going to capture for up to seven years. You can go up to 15, but we put a cap at the City Council, years go up seven, hopefully shorter than that even, so.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yeah, one more question, City Manager. So to your understanding, the presentation we're going to see is relative to the Brownfield, that the, the site plan, the design, the, the structure itself is 100% the same?
Correct. So thank you for bringing that up, because we told them, obviously, this is an opportunity for people to come out against it again. We're not touching the site plan. We said, if you move a window, you're starting again. So this is the exact same plan. Good question.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a request to schedule a public hearing for June 12th for the Rochester Skate Park. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Again, back in the Wayback Machine, we've been talking about this for probably 13 years. And we made it very clear that we, we've went and visited sites in Farmington Hills and in Brighton and Auburn Hills and all over to see how skate parks have evolved over time. And they've really, really been desensitized. It's a common thing now, but they're expensive. So we didn't, even in our Parks and Rec master plan, it wasn't an overwhelming push to have a skate park. It's really driven by those who use that. And with Vaughn and Linda Gallagher running the skate shop, they used to have an indoor skate, so if you remember on South Street. So they've never given up that, that dream. And we told them that it would have to be privately funded. So they've gone to the Tony Hawk Foundation. They were turned down the first time. And then they, they keep trying, but it, it got scaled back to, when we went to look the first time, we went to Farmington Hills on Seven Mile, incredible skate park, one of the first round, deep bowls, I mean, it was 1.7 million back then. And that, that was at least eight years ago. So they've more scaled this back. We told them, City Council told them a couple of years ago, if we wanted to do this, we could do this north of Woodward in J.C. Park, where the ball dime is. We were even willing to rearrange that ball field, because at the time, we had some basketball courts that weren't used much, there's dead space in the middle, the community garden was starting to flourish, et cetera. So we said, we would look at our participation would be to work with you on that project. And then since then, they've come back and said, you know, these have evolved so much that really, we just need an urban one, which is a flat slab with a lot of above-ground things, much less expensive in a much more compressed area. So it would not require us moving the ball field. The basketball courts, we got, Jason was able to get, got a resurface some two years ago. They're used all the time. And then there's space in the middle that we could do something there with the skate park. So they, we, they came back in and asked us, would we support a application for a Spark grant? So I know Alec's been working with them, Kathy Dalton's been working with them, Vaughn, Linda and Vaughn have been working together. So they asked for no financial commitment from the city, ever, but even for this part. But we need a resolution saying that we support the land that they could use if they are granted the Spark grant. So we have to have that public hearing. We're trying to schedule for June 12th. They'll show you the, the plans that they have. They're pretty rudimentary. This grant doesn't make you go into engineering and all that good stuff. So this is a lot less intrusive. It could be a good addition to our city, and we support them trying to get these dollars through the Spark grant. So again, I would just ask tonight to schedule the public hearing for June 12th.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yeah, so I have a question. So our Parks master plan, I thought we were working on that this year. So it's in flux currently?
By the fall, we'll have to complete it.
Okay, so having a public hearing on this, can it be subject to the fact that the Parks master plan may change? I mean, and what I'm reading here is that we're, I'll say, reserving some city land for this. Does that kind of lock that in then, in our master plan that we are currently working on? You know, and I understand the need to have a city resolution to get a grant and, you know, chicken and egg scenario, but I, I just don't know how much we're really committing the city to here.
Yeah, I think at any point, any grant, if you don't want to use it, you don't have to. So I, I think that's the key here. We made that very clear. We, we have not got approval from this council to use that land, because we don't know exactly what you're asking for. But to get to the Spark grant, it's a pretty, Alec, tell me if I'm doing this wrong, but I think it's a pretty open grant, like, it's the use that you're trying to do. And you identify a location. But at any time, if we don't like it, or they have to come in with money, we don't have to use that money for that grant. So I'm not worried about it interfering in the land, in the Parks master plan, because we reserve the right to approve it or not approve it, if granted. And it's a ways out. We might be done with that master plan before they even find out about the Spark grant, so.
So I also had a comment. It says here, the city has proposed to revive the land to build a skate park, as well as ongoing maintenance once it's built. I, I don't believe we've ever approved anything like that.
Yeah, and I agree, the wording is, is a little wonky, but we, it's all private. They, they'd have to provide, provide the money and the resource to do that, to make it. It's, it's got to be a city apply for the grant. That's the problem. Municipality has to do it. So we have to commit to that, but we wouldn't commit to it unless they had a funding source to pay for it.
Including ongoing maintenance.
Including ongoing maintenance.
Okay, because that's not what that says.
It, it doesn't read that way, but that's the intent.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yeah, Nick, I'm on the Spark Grant, Michigan Spark Grant page. And like other grants we've applied for, they designate opportunity communities of which we are not one.
Right.
So it's the usual suspects on the list. So I'm supportive of applying for the Spark grant, but I feel it's going to happen the same way some of our other grants. We'll write up a great thing, and then some other city will, will be awarded the, you know, the limited funds that are available through Spark. So have, has your committee or Kathy Dalton and her group considered that, that?
They haven't.
Apply for a Spark grant, they're going to say, well, you're in Rochester, you have two, your, your per capita is too high, so you're not going to get anything.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I think that's a very strong possibility. The good news, on the other flip side, is a lot of communities that are those communities have them already. So the list is starting to dwindle a little bit for this opportunity, but, and not a lot of them would be able to say to a private sector, you have to fund it, you have to maintain it. And that would be in our agreement, if in fact, they are eligible. They're still going after the Tony Hawk grant. That's literally a grant. That, that doesn't cost anybody anything. That's where it should come from. And they got Pontiac beat them out last time. So I think they'd need to get a little bit further ahead. And it's, it's a little loose on drawings and things, and they keep scaling it back, which is great. But I think granting, folks like to see, okay, you're ready to go, shovel ready, as we talked about. They're not quite there yet. But it can hurt for them to ask. I think it's a long shot. But we're not putting ourselves in jeopardy to commit to any dollars. So I felt better about that.
Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, yes, thank you. So I guess for administration, I thought this was supposed to be, if we approved this to go to public hearing, we are agreeing that they can use, have that land, though, because without that approval, they, the grant doesn't matter.
And I, through the chair, it's, it's a, so I, I don't know how to say this exactly. So again, we can back out at any time. So at the public hearing, we get input, and they, but we told them, if you want to prove your point, bring your supporters, explain to council why we would give up a piece of our park and who's this for. So that's what the public hearing for. They need to come and convince us that that's a good idea. So again, even if that was, we were convinced that that little piece of land is good for us. We, until it's funded, we're not committing to it. I don't know if that helps.
Councilmember? Councilmember Albrecht?
You know, just listening to the concerns you have, Mayor, with some of the wording on this, should this be tightened up and brought back before us and then?
Alec, is there a date they have to have this in by? Do you know? It's like now, isn't it? They, I can't tell you that I'm happy about getting jammed on this, because they've been working on this for years. And I think it's June 1st, it's got to go in.
But the public hearing is June 12th.
I'm sorry, July 1st, sorry. So I think they're trying to buy themselves one meeting in case something came up, the public hearing, that they could get to. Oh, that's right. That's right. We couldn't make the 26th meeting because of that. That's right. So again, and we don't have to do this if we don't want, but that's why it was the 12th, not the 26th. That's correct.
It just seems, I mean, we were all supportive of a skate park and the concept of, and I still am, just this, this memo and some of the questions we have suggest to me it's a little bit loose. And I just, you know, I don't like voting on something that's not buttoned up.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we schedule the public hearing, because we have put them off long enough for this, and they can't move forward without knowing that we're okay with them at least bringing it forward. And it would be no different than learning about the Brownfield redevelopment project without having that information in front of us right now.
And I will, if I may, Mr. Mayor, would make sure that they are full-on, full-court press on the 12th, every answer that we need to be comfortable with at that meeting to make a decision to apply for the grant. Because if we are not comfortable on that date, they miss a year. And so it's going to be on them to convince you, this is the right use of the land, how they're going to fund it, et cetera. So we have not given them any indication that we're in total support, because we haven't seen their entire project. So they hit us with the date of the 20, you're right, the 23rd. So we had to do it on the 12th to get it in front of you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
If I could request in the packet, not at the meeting?
Gotcha, yes.
In the packet, for all the public to see.
Absolutely. Gotcha.
I'll support.
Councilmember Trent? Oh, so we have a motion by Councilmember Peterson. Is there support?
I support it.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll?
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
I will make sure they come well prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is on to reports from regular business. First is consideration of proposed resolution authorizing the city to participate in Oakland County's Urban County Community Block Grant Program for the year 2024 through 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So every three years, the county is our fiduciary provider of doing all the paperwork that we need to go through the block grant program. So they take care of that part, and then they use that for our dollars. So what we're going to do is, every three years, they ask you to recommit to them for a three-year period to be, so they're our steward of the dollars. And we are in support of that. We don't have the staff to do it. Jeremy is going to be our CDVG coordinator. But I took this, he wasn't here yet, so we got this this far, so that we agree to continue that relationship. It's been for six years, I believe, and it's worked really well for us. And Mike at the county has been great about this. So I would support our, asking for support to enter into this agreement for three years.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed resolution authorizing the city to participate in Oakland County Urban County Community Block Grant Program for the years 2024 to 2026.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of ordinance amendment, Section 2115, special projects approval standards, second reading and adoption.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance amendment for second reading and adoption.
Motion by the Mayor Protem?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Councilmember Peterson?
Okay, so to the administration, if I may, Mayor, I would like to, I'm not, I think that we're going to miss out on opportunities by having this only be utilized if it's adjacent to special project, to the special project overlay district, boundary line. And here's why. Because I just learned today that OCC White Lake Community College just sold the college to build development, right? So what if we had other areas that needed it that aren't adjacent, that we could have development, that would potentially affect them and not be able to have a project brought in? So.
Mr. City Manager?
It's a fair, a fair question. So when we went through the planning commission, and we had the joint meeting with City Council, we actually were very close to saying, let's just make the whole city a, a special project. And I've been doing this for 45 years, and that's scary as heck to me as a planner, that.
Would not do it.
The public would look at that as some kind of grab you're trying to do to get to soleronics, to get to administration building. So we could still accomplish what you asked, Councilwoman Peterson, by, it takes a process. If you wanted to amend a new place, you amend the master plan. And that can be done. That takes about six months. So we could do that. But during the evolution of looking at all these in the master plan, we cognitively did not ask for any other ones like soleronics or the administration building. We'll let them play with the underlying zoning. So they could still accomplish what they, you would think would be good planning by rezoning to the proper plan. That's what we're going through with the planning commission right now. You're about to see the first five districts, six districts soon. And I, I'm confident that we'll get the zoning right, so we won't have to worry about special projects down the line. But if in fact, we found something that we thought, eh, we think that's a good idea, we can amend that master plan to do that. Because it's still in the zoning ordinance that says the, the master plan, future land use map is the, the identifier for special projects. So unless you modify that, it stays as it is. So did that answer your question?
Sort of, but I still think we have too many restrictions. And I'm going to say that along with what we, what was approved a couple meetings ago regarding the accessory dwelling units. Because right now, that is the topic in Washington, of using that, having that as the next way of bringing other development into the communities, okay? And also the multi-use of older buildings, turning them into residential now. I mean, so I don't want us to get stuck. And what if that six months to update a master plan changes everything moving forward, right? With the developer just moves on somewhere else? Are we going to be able, are we going to stop development? But it's not even on big projects like that. Anyone can come in today and go buy up a whole block of houses and change it, you know? I mean, there are people who have gone into other communities to do that. So I, I don't know. I just don't like it that it is just stuck to, it has to be adjacent.
Right. And again, two different, two different items. So. So if somebody came in to buy a block up, rezone it to whatever the appropriate zoning. So we always have that tool to use zoning. Every community does, unless you have this special project. But the only way to get to purely what you're saying is the whole city, it'd have to be a special project. And we weren't in support of that at this point in time. So we can still accomplish planning wise, what you're talking about. Most developers don't expect to come in and, hey, every, very few cities, I didn't know any, to be honest with you, that had special projects like this. It's a very, it's a great tool as a planner, it's a horrible tool if you're a resident thinking they can do whatever you want, no rules. That's a little scary for people, so.
Mayor.
Well, no, I just, to follow up, well, but I didn't see it that way. I knew that we'd still, everyone would still have to come before the city and still get approval.
True.
Okay. But then can you explain to me why it says, or other non-residentials, or multifamily?
Right, so it was identify the not residential. So we don't want anybody going into a residential district, R1, 2, 3, 4, 5, to say, that could be a special project, don't want that. If you want something there, get a rezoning. So it was industrial multiple family, because multiple families are commercial technically. It's not the ones and twos, I think that's what you're talking about, so it's not the ones and twos, it's the big apartments that could also, they might be contiguous and have a line that's cut through their property. Up at Great Oaks, there's a couple little weird ones up there, but that was the intent for that.
Public wanted those questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Salvia.
Thank you. Just to clarify with administration, so I believe it, part of the adoption is that this overlay that we're going to see on the map? And when will the public and council see that?
Yep, so we're going to bring the five, we do three districts a month at the planning commission, then we'll bring them to city council. And it looks like we're headed towards when we get all them done, which shouldn't be, we only have five more districts to go, get them all here and then bring in that zoning map at one time and redo the whole thing at once. We ran into an interesting concept of planning commission that unintended consequences from how Beckett, Raider and previous administrations set this up. It was like, oh, we're not gonna, they called it organic. They call it organic. That they would say, anybody could come in and pick between the new land use categories or the old. It just shot us in the foot. We took some things out of the old so we couldn't get stuck having things we don't want. So we talked about planning commission head nods, we're going to come in and finish this job, get them all right here, and then we're going to adopt it all at once, take on one giant rezoning of the whole city. It doesn't affect most people, but there's a few little tweaks in there. And then bite the bullet and we'll have brand new zoning classifications, new zoning ordinance, everything that matches what this group put together in the master plan. So that's our plan.
Councilmember Peterson.
So then, why are we going to approve this first without seeing the actual overlay?
Yep, so it's, this is to fix a problem. It's on, it's on, we don't want to get sued. The line goes right through the middle of their property, it's the elevator, yeah. And we made that clear to everybody, it's, this is the one that somehow they, they call us Scribner's era, whatever, it's just, we don't want to get sued.
It's a problem.
Yeah, it's just that.
Well, is that a precedent that we're changing it just for that?
No, because they still had to meet the same standards of that talked about. In order to do it, planning commission and city council have to approve the special project requirements, which is quite lengthy. So if they were just saying, we're gonna do it so we can get 80 more units, we're not going to approve that, neither the planning commission or council. So this was just to fix a boundary error.
All set?
Yes, oh, yes, thank you.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
And Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is consideration of an ordinance amendment to section 2807, dumpster and trash stores enclosure, second reading and adoption. Mayor Protem.
Been noticing a lot of trash dumpsters around town. I never noticed the trash dumpsters until we started talking about this.
They're not good.
So I'd like to make a motion to move this to second reading and adoption.
Support.
Motion by the Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Peterson, yes, between the planning commission and the city council, we have talked about dumpsters.
And, yes, recycling.
Quite often, and the DDA and everything too. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of resolution to participate in the West Nile virus prevention reimbursement program from Oakland County. Mr. DPW Director Alec.
So this is the program that the city has participated in for a few years now. The program's been available since 2003. Provide grant funding to communities to purchase, let me get the name right, larvicide briquettes that Public Works puts in the storm sewers to help fight against West Nile virus. The grant would be for a total of $1,666.36, costing us $269.64. So pretty straightforward, not a big budget. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Councilmember Peterson.
Just one, thank you though for bringing this, and I know it's important, but are there any health, environmental concerns or anything with this here going into the basin like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
That they've ever given.
As far as I can see, is a, a way to, way to treat it and prevent it that is accepted and used by many communities.
No, I know, but health-related.
Yeah, again, so we've been doing the same project, I think they've had clinical studies for 20 years, if I remember on this. So it's been deemed environmentally safe for public, pets, everything. So they got this down pretty good in the last 20 years, so.
Make a motion to approve it.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Councilmember Trent.
Well, you know I'd have to discuss it. Yeah, I looked it up and it, everything I read about it was safe.
And we don't just go putting them in every day, you have to put them in at certain times, that way they're not washed down the storm sewer, and so it is dependent upon weather too.
I mean, instead of the, and it looked like it was more effective, because to just blanket spray, like they were doing and they did last year, it is scary. And they, it kills a lot more than mosquitoes and it isn't that efficient or effective because they have to be spraying all the time and they just, one blanket spray kills everything, you know, it can. And then these briquettes actually kill the larvae where they, where it starts. That's my, that's all I have to say about it.
Just on a side note, do we ever do the moth spraying?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did, but we were lucky enough, last year our count was so low, we didn't have to spray this year.
Spongy moth.
Spongy moth, the spongy moth.
Yeah, I know, you didn't hear me say the, politically incorrect.
And so a resolution is needed for approval in order for us to participate and request a reimbursement.
We have a motion, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of request to complete mill and fill projects on Romeo Road from Main Street to Parkdale. Mr. Cityman, or DPW Director?
So MDOT is scheduled to be conducting some mill and fill preventative maintenance work on Rochester Road in the first half of June. Still waiting on a finalized schedule on that. But in, to take advantage of a situation, city staff is requesting to piggyback on MDOT's contract with Allied Paving, or Allied Construction, I'm sorry, to have them also do a two-inch mill and fill on Romeo Road, the entire width from the Main Street or Rochester Road intersection all the way up to the Parkdale intersection. Current road is in pretty rough shape. This is going to be an area or road that's going to be, or it's being traveled on a lot right now with some regional detours. And when MDOT does, does come in 2026 to reconstruct the road, that's going to be a, a road that's going to get a lot of traffic too, with different trucks and whatnot coming in. So we'd like to take advantage of a situation and we do have funds available in the major roads and streets, construction funds for this fiscal year. The quote that we received from Allied Construction was for, lost the number here, $77,210. We're requesting council to approve, not budget, not to exceed $90,000, just in case something pops up that we just couldn't tell. It is in kind of rough shape, so in case a section of curb has to be done or something, we'd like to have that a little bit of a buffer. I was just going to say that right now, in that line item for this fiscal year is about $94,000. There's nothing to, that is, still needs to use that money. It's kind of there, that extra little bit will be there in case any other emergencies were to pop up.
And I might add, a misfit that will work with Anthony, that piece that's in the DDA, we have funds set aside from the DDA for streets like this. So we would use there, we can divide this up proportionally and take it out of their fund balance, which is set aside exactly for this stuff. They're trying to save it up for when we do the big Main Street project, but this will actually knock down the Main Street project a teeny bit, so.
And one final detail, if you look on the site plan that was provided, the little bits right there at the intersection that's red. That's technically MDOT right of way. And they were not going to be doing that section in their work that they have coming up in a few weeks, they're just doing just straight lanes up and down the road. So they said, you guys want to do that and have it be a continued look, you have to pay for it. Unfortunately, I like that answer, but I think it would be best and we recommend going ahead and doing that amount, or doing that section as well to have it be a continued replaced, smooth down look. That little red section's about.
Forty-four hundred?
I think I had in my, yeah, it was about forty.
Forty-four hundred. So we don't want to leave it looking like, what the heck do they do there? So that's that.
But they'll just tear it up in a couple of years anyhow.
Four years, yeah.
Councilmember Sage. I'd like to make a motion to approve allied construction to complete a two-inch mill and fill on Romeo Road not to exceed 90,000.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Peterson, Mayor Protem, Salvia, discussion.
Alec, what was the timing on this? I heard within this fiscal year, so that means before July 1st, but do we know when the road is going to be closed?
They are telling me first half of June. Still waiting on a, because they need to complete the project before, and by end of June as well.
Okay.
So still waiting on finalized schedule. They were supposed, and that was also supposed to begin work on the Pink Creek Bridge on Rochester Road tomorrow, but that project has been postponed. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen with this project, I don't think it's going to, they seem pretty dead set on doing this. So we're looking at first half of June.
Okay, the timing should have been in the memo.
Apologize if I did not. So once I have a finalized schedule on there, I'll make sure to communicate to council and to the public and.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an infrastructure committee and Mayor Protem, Salvia and Councilmember Peterson and myself are on here. And I know you have to, the administration has to take advantage of these opportunities, especially with MDOT tearing up that north Main Street and, you know, we can get allied construction to come in and do. I'm all for redoing Romeo with the mill and fill. I just don't want to diminish the impact of our, of our infrastructure committee. We have a budget and finance committee and anything that comes before city council, we usually talk about it so we can talk about some of the things before it comes to, it comes to city council. At least you have three people who have weighed in from city council on the budget and finance committee, which I think is working very well. So, and as I reached out to you earlier today, Alec, on something like this, I know getting us together is sometimes challenging, but maybe reaching out to the three of us to say, hey, here's any thoughts and, you know, then Mayor Protem could have put in the thought that, what's the timing of this? I had some thoughts on it also. So I just, for you and Nick, who I copied on my email, I'd like to just see a little more cadence on the infrastructure committee, either in our meetings, which include, in addition to the three of us, residents that also want to be involved in all these kinds of things. So I just, I'm seeing a few more of these slide into the city council without any infrastructure committee discussion. So, and again, I'm very respectful of what you have to do to sort of juggle all these things to get them done and the short windows that MDOT has given you and everything else like that. So I appreciate everything you have to do, I just wanted to make that comment. I'll be supportive of this, but I think it's important that that's, we, that's addressed with administration.
Absolutely understood, but in the memo it does say the date, it says in, the first half of June, it's in the memo.
Okay.
Right in the memo, but I understand your other point and we hear, we hear you.
Yep, and I totally agree with the understanding, I apologize, it's just, yeah, timing was, met with them two weeks ago and they're doing it in a few weeks, it was just, this was the only meeting we could even bring it to before they would be doing the work. But I, I will make a better effort in the future.
Thanks, Alec.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a confirmation of mayoral appointments to boards and commissions. We could do them individually or all of them at the same time.
I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Trent, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we also have a receipt of the check register, if anybody has any. Not a report from the various boards and commissions, first a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During our meeting, we welcomed the new trail manager, Tom Correll. Yes, very exciting. We also had an update with the Dillman and Upton property and the continued negotiation correspondence we've had with them.
correspondence we've had with them. So, the trailway commission denied Dillman and Upton's request to increase the fence line. The trail also requested that they clean up some of the broken debris from the existing fence and to fix it. Dillman and Upton agreed. The trailway also requested that some trees and native plants be, be installed, of which Dillman and Upton denied that request. We also had an update on the southeast Rochester property, so the question I have, and this was, I didn't have the answer, does AEW have an updated site plan and, and cost estimate on that property?
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Okay, great. The trustee, the lawyer for the trust is prepared, once they have an updated site plan, I think we could go into construction on this project very quickly, if it gets passed through. Would that have to go to planning?
I don't think there was a structure involved, if I remember.
There's an observation deck.
Yeah, so, no.
Okay, great. Also, the, the commission asked, if this does get approved and installed, obviously they're going to be looking for us to sign, the city to sign a maintenance commitment associated to the project, an ongoing maintenance commitment. And then finally, the trailway will be celebrating its fortieth anniversary in November, and they've asked if we could put some kind of acknowledgement there in our display case here at City Hall, so, great.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, Councilmember Sage, just a question again on motorized vehicles, specifically those hoverboards. I know on the website it says they're not allowed, I'm starting to see quite a few of them out there. Any update on signage, because I think people just don't know.
The signage will, that debate continues. We try consciously not to keep adding signs to the trail. But we did have someone come in and asked us to look at alternate personal devices, electric devices for use on the trail, because apparently it is widespread now on certain trails, you can have these other forms. So, we're going to begin that discussion, that's where it starts, and then I think it's going to, it'll probably evolve into, do we put up speed limit signs and things like that? But then also it comes down to, how do we enforce that? You know, I don't, I don't think the sheriff we have out there is going to be ready to get any tickets, but...
Right, but I just don't think any residents can really speak up and say, hey, I don't think you should be on the trail, if they don't know.
Correct. So I think at our next meeting, we will have an open discussion on that.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, Councilmember Sage, is that, are you referring to electric bikes as well, then?
No.
Yeah, so, electric bikes are already approved on the trail, up to certain mileage, speed limits. That's already on the books.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's these other new, yeah, unicycles and...
Hoverboards.
Hoverboards, and, right.
Back to the future.
Is there any talk about eliminating electric bikes on the trail?
No.
Good.
Oh. No, not good.
That's not fair. Does that count as a bike ride?
No.
Just kidding. Next is a report from City Beautiful, Councilmember Gould.
Yes, sir, we met on May 17th. It was a great meeting, lot going on. We had a, a report was submitted from Rochester Pollinators, which, per usual, has lots happening. There is another spring plant sale, the last one, I believe, is on May 27th. They are in the process of donating and planting native plants to several designated areas along the river, and working on Dinosaur Hill Garden Restoration and continuing to maintain other pollinator gardens in the city. They're looking for some volunteers for a native plant around the bridge behind the community center, I think you contact them for that, and to work with the park department to work on another invasive removal day, invasive plant removal day, hasn't been scheduled yet, and even looking for some help for some plantings along the riverbank. The display case that City Beautiful put up has been moved to the library, and it was suggested at the meeting, maybe City Beautiful try to get in queue again to do another one, and everybody was quite happy with that display case, and see if we can get in queue to do it again later in the year. Nick provided us with an update on DPW, a couple of highlights. The first gazebo is up at the Sugar Maple Grove. Nick is still actively selling benches.
Someone today?
There we go. Redoing the fireplace and the skating shelter. They are working on solar powered crosswalk signs that are being installed. We did get a couple of more updates, they do have the two bluebird houses up, a little pause on that, as DPW's attention, I think, has turned to, you know, mowing the grass and mulching and things such as that, so. And they're considering a couple of options for raising some additional funds, so, still batting around some ideas there. That is all I have.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Downtown Development Authority, Councilmember Trent.
Okay, so, Historical Commission Liaison was attending the meeting as usual, and they said that on May 27th and 28th is the Heritage Festival, and they have a lot, are going to have food trucks and over a hundred fifty cars and dancing and more, and all the other great things that they always have, celebrating our history and heritage. Also, the sidewalk sales were discussed, they're coming up July 13th through 15th, you know, July comes up pretty fast, we're also going to have dancing in the streets, but what additionally, they're going to want to ask to allow selling of liquor from the state, and we'll be coming to council to ask for that, and social districts discussion was had. So I don't know if you know what those are, but they block off a, yes, do you guys know what that is? Does everybody know what that is?
Yep.
Yep, so you block off a certain area, and then you manage it, and people can have drinks on the street. I was in Chelsea, it was really nice, that was very nice, and they had a very, a lot of signage, it worked really well, no one was too rowdy, behaving themselves. So then we met the new hire, Jeremy Peckins, and I've known Jeremy and his family for over a decade, and my youngest daughter went to school with him, and he's now our new planning and zoning administrator. It's really nice to see something like that, when things come full circle like that, and that's why I love this community. So now we have the front porch update. The downtown and the front porch project is the project that the DDA is working on designing to renovate the farmer's market parking lot, and to that end, they have been working hard, and we've been, I've been, I'm on site committee, and so at this point, they're ready to show the plans and ask the public for public comment, but also, they're going to have two focus group meetings on May 31 and June 5th for the community to give their input on, on what they're going to show. And I'm having, I have a little part up here that has the front porch part, and then on the back, and they'll have bigger renderings, it'll be bigger than this, that they'll, they'll ask you what your input is, if you have any ideas, but also, if you cannot attend, you can pop your name in and email address and comments, so, and that's on their webpage, and they also have a FAQ section as well, and you can register for the sessions, and the webpage is downtownrochestermi.com/front-porch, you can go there, and also drop by the collaboration studio at 431 Main Street to discuss it as well. The goal is to service as many people in the community as possible, this is the biggest project that they have done with their funds at to date. So, Christopher Travarro and Alec Mizikar went to the Smart Bus Public Hearing at Oakland University on May 15th, and basically what was said is that they public, for this, they shared their proposed routes, but were unable to provide details in term of, terms of location and number of stops. In the next phase, they will be meeting with each community individual to figure out what stops are going to be, where they're going to be placed and the signage that's going to be needed. And last but not least, the farmer's market opening day was a huge success, and farmer's market bags were given away in five hundred bags in forty-two minutes, which was the fastest, I guess they time it, so this is, this is all-time winner of that, I guess, of that contest. So, they said it was the busiest opening day to date, and then I, my, was at the farmer's market just this last weekend, and it continues to have many attendees and unique vendors. And last but not least, as Councilman Doug Gould said, we are selling, Rochester Pollinators is selling native plants at the market, if you just want to come by and pick up your native plants to save our local pollinators and lawn of butterfly.
Thank you. Next is a report from the, from Ra-Ra, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on May 17th, and some really good news, as we had Yeoh and Yaoh, who are, have done our audit for years, came by and presented the audit. We received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can get on, on an audit, which is what we've gotten in years past, but the great news beyond that was the fact that the fund balance now is one million, thirty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, or thirty-six percent. Considering where we came from to where we are, that's, that's a, a great number. In terms of registrations, now that we didn't have a March meeting, so I'm sort of getting everybody caught up, we've, this year, 2023 through April, two thousand nine hundred and twenty registrations versus this time last year, and remember, last year was a good year for us, so it was two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven, so a net gain of two hundred and forty-three. Those of you who will follow Ra-Ra on Facebook, our summer camps are going crazy. The summer camps and the birthday parties, we're back to pre-COVID numbers and beyond. We are, have so many summer camps that we decided to add another camp, so that's, that's going forward, and the, the demand is, 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 is great to hear, and, and I asked the question during the board meeting, you know, you, you know, I remember raising my kids, there was always a thousand opportunities for camps, you know, and, and I thought, you know, how are we competing, and I guess the, the variety of our camps, that every day they're doing something different, they're taking advantage of some of our beautiful treasures around here, Van Hughesen Farm, water parks, all those other kinds of things, so I guess we hold our own against some of these other more expensive camps. I was there on Saturday for the, well, I was there for the board meeting, and then Saturday for the craft show, which was well attended, but if you've gone inside Ra-Ra or haven't gone inside Ra-Ra, please do so. Think about all the way, wayfinding signage that was done in downtown Rochester several years ago. If you go into the Ra-Ra now, it's all been repainted, there's a registration desk right at the door, it's from the back area, there, there's wayfinding signs throughout the facility, it's, it's amazing, and then just the design, and a lot of it is the, those, where they just, you know, put the stuff on there, it's not painted, it just wraps on different kinds of things, so it really pops when you walk in there. So the next really major expense will be the, the PlayStation in there, sort of similar to what you see at McDonald's, that one is showing its age, so we'll be looking at that in the next several months to, to probably refurbish that or replace it. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
I think I pretty much gave you that.
Okay. Next is a report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We reviewed, we had public hearings on the Transition District downtown and the two mixed-use districts. All three were approved and were referred back to council now, so we'll probably see those at our next meeting. As men, as City Manager Banda mentioned, we are almost done with reviewing all the districts, and to compare the zoning versus what's outlined in the master plan. Once that's all complete, I think we're going to do it through a joint meeting with planning and council, let's take a look at the overlay, and then make the decision to either approve or not to approve the complete rezoning to match the master plan.
Very good. Thank you. On to public comment miscellaneous, is there any comment from the audience? Mr. City Manager.
Just a couple of things, Jeremy, you want to come up for a minute? So we'll put a face with the name here. So this is Jeremy Peckins, our new, as Councilman Trent said, our new planning and zoning coordinator. So I've known Jeremy since he's a little boy, because I've been fishing with his dad for like thirty years, so, so Jeremy always had interest in planning and government for a long time, sitting around a campfire talking about it, so I remember a lot, so he followed through at, when he was a senior, I think, in high school, he called me and says, hey, I'll volunteer, you don't have to pay me, what can I do? I want to be around planning stuff. So he came in, spent two or three months after school with me, and we got through, he did the tedious stuff, going through files, merging things, but it let him get a taste of what planning was. Went to Wayne State, got his undergrad in philosophy and urban studies, and then went to the private sector, worked for the county for a while, never gives up, times were great for jobs, Jeremy just kept doing what he had to do. Got pulled into United Mortgage, I believe, because his brother was there, he's like, no, I got to get out of here as fast as I can. So, went and got his masters in public administration, and then came back here for almost a year to be a paid intern, worked with DPW before Alec got there, and helped them with a lot of their processes and technology stuff, so opportunity came along for the planning and zoning administrator. I know ultimately wants to be a city manager, but there's a lot of different ways to get to that. Some people do HR, some people do finance, some people do DPW, some do economic development. So I'm like, Jeremy, if you come here, I know you can handle planning and zoning, because you have a background in it, but we're going to throw you in everything else I can. So he's going to Brownfield, he's the planning commission, the city councilman, he'll get a taste of government, and we can hopefully keep him around and, and start growing our own, because we have Alec, we've got Brian, you've got people in our organization that are looking to, we're trying to grow that farm team, right, as we go in and, and share what we can with them, so we're excited about that, glad to have him here, he's already hit the ground running, cleaned up the whole process already, and looking forward to getting as much as we can out of Jeremy. So if you want to say anything, Jeremy?
Welcome, Jeremy.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me, I'm excited to work for this great city again, it's my hometown, so happy to be here.
He grew up right the hills, so.
Welcome.
Thanks, Jeremy. Second, last, whatever day that was, Chief, we went, and Alec and Joellen and Lieutenant Harper graduated from two series of classes from Leadership Rochester, so they didn't ever get to have their graduation parties from a couple of years ago, and then this present class that Alec was in. So, we went in support at the breakfast and heard the speech from their teams, they had some, I'll tell you, Alec, that was probably one of the best classes that we've ever been part of, because we do Government Day, I get to get them at Par, I get to go with Mayor Barnett, and we do a joint thing with Oakland Township, us and the Hills together, and that was the most energetic group I've seen, they, it amazes me, there've been so many classes, and they're all different, and the companies keep throwing their best at this, and we get our chance to talk about get involved in your community, right? We talked about that from high school to college, to get on the border commission, the only way you're going to control your own destiny in the city you live in is to get involved, so these guys live it every day, so we're very happy to celebrate with them at the breakfast. And then I want to shout out to the guys in DPW and ladies that, the cemetery will be ready for Memorial Day, Mayor, I'm sure you'll talk about that, and then the park will be ready, it looks great, the fountain pooped out, of course, last Wednesday, and Lake Pro came in, found a bed, somebody hooked the, the fountain, and then pulled it just right enough to blow a transistor or capacitor inside the motor. So the guys came and pulled it, fixed it, it's working again today. So that, our pond looks clean, the park's ready to go for this weekend, should be a great weekend to celebrate together. And lastly, I wanted me to remind you, Thursday night is Chief's party, about two hundred folks at the Roxy, it will be right there to be ready, we'll be fine, we'll have a great celebration that evening, and come join us if you can, and that's it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Just a reminder, the Memorial Day service is at the cemetery at eight AM, and we'll all be sending out a news flash via the website, not the emergency alert, but send that out Wednesday or Thursday, see if you get the information out there again, so, hopefully the attendance will be up from last year.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sage?
Just another reminder, this weekend is Greater Rochester Heritage Days, come celebrate here in Municipal Park.
Councilmember Albrecht?
A week from today is Memorial Day, and we have the Tri-City Rochester Hills, Oakland Township and Rochester Parade kicking off from Van Hughesen Middle School at eleven o'clock, ending at Veterans Tribute, Veterans Point, where we'll have a, a agenda put together there, so looking forward to improving on last year, as we brought back this parade, as we honor our fallen heroes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, and just to add on to that, they added an additional feature, is to, you can bring a picture with you and carry it along the route of someone who has given their life to our country, and, and you can carry it in the parade.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson?
Sure, I'll ask for an excused absence, even though it's not necessary for missing last, last meeting.
So moved?
Motion by Mayor Protem?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage, Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Well, I would happen to be in DC, and there's a lot of things happening, especially with housing, and one of the biggest things that's being worked on right now is changing the capital gains requirements, so hopefully that can change and help, help people save money and not be penalized with the new rise in house costs and the profits that they receive from that, so it will hopefully change the dynamics of housing. There was a lot of other discussion, but do it another day.
I like the sound of that one. A few things quickly, one, the Chief's Party on Thursday, looking forward to that, and then the Memorial Day, we have two events, one eight AM at our cemetery, we have a nice program, bands, short speeches, things like that, and then the parade that Councilmember Albrecht talked about, so it should be a good day to honor our veterans and things. So without further ado, thank you everybody tonight, meeting adjourned.
And good weather.